This meeting is being made available to the public through the live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 9 and YouTube channel at Emperor Feeding LS and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made over the session will be recorded. Please join us and recede the questions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome. Sorry we're late. Our first scheduled appointment is American Legion presentation for Christine Callahan. Do I think -- hi Christine. Do we have -- Paul, are you coming to join us?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, sir.
Don't swear.
Not tonight.
Oh.
Come up here, please.
Ms. Callahan, would you rise? Thank you. Please join us in the front.
All right. This is a word for you.
Oh my gosh, come on.
We present to her for saving a life on Veterans Day. To let you people know if you don't know, after our service at the school, we were invited back to the alumni to get a free meal. So there was five of us that went there and we all got prime rib. One of us, that wasn't me, started choking on his prime rib. She jumped up without hesitation and performed the Arnold maneuver right on him in the middle of a crowded restaurant. First time it didn't work, second time it shot out like a rocket. And then he sat back down and kept on eating. But on a serious note, that she did save his life because if we had to call the fire department or the police department, as good as they are, it would have taken at least five or six minutes to get there without him breathing. All right. At a minimum, it could have thrown him into a coma with brain damage. I've seen it happen myself. So I urge everyone to learn it. It's very simple and can save a life. I've seen it done many times. I've had to do it myself. It's not hard to do. You get much reward. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, so Christine.
What is doing?
Are you trying to get us in it or out of it?
In it.
In it, okay, yeah.
So we shall stand. It's a website.
It's a website of. Yeah, I'm not kidding. I know you are.
Wayne should be in here, too.
Get them all, get everybody get in. Come on.
Here's the victim.
Oh, poor Wayne.
That's embarrassing.
To be honest with you, the true story of that was he got a piece stuck in his throat, so we decided he was gonna throw another piece down to help it. When that didn't work, he threw some beer down, or whether it even worked.
Say prime rib. Thank you. Good job, Christine. Oh my goodness. Oh my. Uh, we still have a couple of minutes before 7:45, so maybe we'll take a couple more action items. Uh, why don't we jump to vote to accept the minutes of December 18th, 2024? Do we have motion?
Motion to accept the select board meeting minutes of December 18th, 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
And how about vote recommendation of ZBA to appoint alternate applicant David Lee of Seven Lantern Way to vacancy. I would love to meet him if he would be willing to come out.
Hello.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming.
Do you have questions for me or just wants to see what I look like?
A little bit of both. We'd just like to have you introduce yourself.
Uh, David Lee, I lived in Lantern Lane since 1997. Um, and I think I was in front of this select board, um, a month or so back when, um, Sabrina mentioned there was a vacancy they were having trouble filling, so applied for it. About time I did something to give something back to the town.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Is received the vote from the zoning board recommending the appointment to the alternate position? Yes. Do we have a motion?
I'd move to appoint David Lee to the zoning board, yes.
Turn to the chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome. All righty.
You do have the option of the vote of a warrant double only to gain a minute.
I suppose we could do that. All right, so the last board action item would be open annual warrant on February 3rd and special within annual warrant February 10th with all warrants to close at 12:00 PM noon on February 14th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I guess I did those backwards. I wasn't thinking we had much time. All right, 7:45 scheduled appointment, change of manager application for Longhorn Steakhouse, number 5310, 125 Church Street. Hello. Thank you for coming. Sabrina, can you tell us a little bit about why you're here?
Um, so I am taking over as the general manager at Longhorn Steakhouse. Um, coming from the North Attleboro location, I was there for about eight years. Um, and this is my first time in a role as the general manager, so it's first time in front of a town council. Thank you. Thank you.
How far away do you live?
I live in, um, I'm from North Kingstown, Rhode Island originally. Um, I am living in Taunton now, so about 45 minutes. I was commuting, not too bad. I was commuting from Attleboro for the first three months, which was a little brutal. There's no way to get here really. It's like a straight shot at all. Yeah, so.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, just want to ask Sabrina, is all the paperwork, uh, in place?
Does anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion?
I would move to approve their, the request of Rare Hospitality International Incorporated, doing business as Longhorn Steakhouse, number 5310, for a change of manager for common vitular alcohol license, number 00056-RS-0960. Exercise at the 125 Church Street Pembroke location from Eric Bane to Heather Lancaster.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, back to the rest of you who's working.
All right. 7:50, Andy, if you're ready. 10 minutes. Planning Board Andrew Wondell, questions regarding Pembroke's MBTA zoning bylaw?
Yes.
Welcome, Andy.
This is what is in the materials. It's a copy of the article, just if you have to reference.
Oh, okay.
It's the article. Can you tell me?
That we approved?
Yeah, that you know by heart, but I just thought maybe it was the American.
I wish I knew it by heart. I don't know it by heart, but I know enough about it to be dangerous. So I understand you've got some, some questions about it, some background or?
I think more of a clarification of why we complied and how it is, um, less detrimental to our town than other towns.
Okay. Great. We complied because it was very easy for us to do so. So about, I would say, three years before MBTA, we didn't, we didn't even hear about MBTA. And we had already approved multifamily housing in industrial A and B. So of that density, so we had already been, we were already there with the special permit. The only change we had to make to the MBTA when we passed it was to make it by right and not by special permit. And we also had to take out the affordability component to it. So we were already there. We got there because we did a, a housing production plan in around 2017, 2018 that identified some areas in town where we could do some more multifamily zoning. And it identified the industrial A and B zones for that. And we already had multifamily housing in that zone, but that multifamily housing was kind of forced on us through 40B. So there's already 230 units of housing up there that does count towards the 750. So we're a third of the way there already for the amount of units that are allowed by density, uh, under MBTA communities. So it was really kind of a no-brainer for us to do it because we were already there. Um, we passed the original, um, bylaw with a two-thirds vote at town meeting. The MBTA was only by majority. But it originally went through, you know, the tougher, the tougher scrutiny on a two-thirds vote. So that's why we did it.
I have a question. So, uh, I think there's a lot of folks out there that they, and obviously they're completely different laws, chapter 3A versus chapter 40B, but there's a lot of people who think that they're similar in some way when they're not. Can you speak to, for example, how the chapter 3A contiguous area we have in industrial A and B would be different than, for example, if it was a giant 40B, what kind of flexibility we have in those situations versus 40B? And so on and so forth to kind of ease some of the concerns around it and to show what kind of, uh, the control that we would have, uh, under the 3A as opposed to what we wouldn't, of course, under 40B.
Yeah, there's a big difference. So 40B, as you know, is a comprehensive permit and it does not require planning board review. It requires some ZBA approval, but there's a lot that the ZBA can't do to deny a 40B request. Uh, 3A is different. 3A, um, is subject to site plan approval by the planning board. So if a developer was to come in and, and give us a site plan for a large multifamily project in industrial A and B zone, the planning board would go through the site plan approval process. Which means that that's when the negotiations start, right? So if there's infrastructure improvements that are required or we think are required, we could negotiate on that. We can negotiate on density. Uh, density is also going to be gated by septic. We don't have sewers in Pembroke, so septic is a big gating factor for any of these larger projects. Um, but it would be under site plan review. We'd also have stormwater review. We'd have septic plans reviewed. Um, so we'd have a lot of say in the project that came before us through the site plan review process. You don't have that with 40B. And that's exactly what happened up there with the 230 units in Pembroke Woods. That was a 40B project. We've had a lot of 40B projects come in because that's just an easier way to get through the process. Whoops. Easier way to get through the process. Um, and there's demand for multifamily housing clearly because the 40B projects are coming pretty fast and furious. There's only two, there's, there's another zone in Pembroke that has multifamily allowed, and that is the residential commercial district, which is primarily Washington Street. So that's why you see those condos there. The density allowed by special permit is four units per acre.
Since, because we'll have more negotiating leverage in those kinds of situations, um, would there be opportunities to kind of, at least to turn them into friendly 40Bs? Things that would actually help us, you know, not just exceed, but better maintain above the 10% affordable housing, which would then help us regain better control over the rest of the town, um, where we have our, our zoning bylaws, uh, where we struggle with 40Bs?
Yeah, certainly. Um, we did go through that process with the one on Plain Street. Um, and I know a lot of people aren't very happy with it. We did ask for less density there. But yes, going the friendly 40B route is preferable. And there are people out there who work with developers to do that with towns. And they go before you before they would go before the ZBA, uh, just to get some approval from you or at least let you know what's going on. So, yeah.
When do you, we have a few projects in the works right now in the pipeline, especially the apartment complex on Matakeetit, which when they apply for their permit, they count right away. So how close are we when they apply for their permit will be, be to the 10%?
Well, I know that Sabrina's kept count. Um, I've counted those in and we're still a smidge below 10%.
The overall housing number up, so 10%. That went up.
That's the hamster wheel we're on.
That's the hamster wheel.
That's the problem I have with 40B is you have this, this project that gets us to 10, you get another development that brings us back down to nine, and we go back to 10 again. This is why we have to, we have to leverage friendly 40Bs. We have to kind of almost invite them in, in a sense, and work with them, negotiate those situations to maintain that. And then we can keep a little, we can stay above the hamster wheel. I know the rentals get us right in.
That's right.
To where we want to be.
You can count all of the units, um, with rentals, not just 25% of the units that are affordable. You count all of the units.
Do you know why that they haven't proceeded? Is that interest rates?
I have no idea. You'd have to talk to the developer.
No, I understand.
Yeah. I don't know.
But, uh, you know, the problem is we have this and it's, it's gonna be great for, uh, 40B, um, what we need for it, but, um, it's just, time's ticking away and people are knocking on that other door for other 40Bs and frankly.
Well, we're also gonna have 172 units up at the country club, so that's gonna move the number, too.
River Marsh, how's that?
Yeah.
I don't know where.
So River Marsh, even if we meet on 10%, they're already approved.
Yeah, that's a done deal.
14 units out of 56, so you have to put all the remainder back on the scale of the other side of the construction, so you're constantly doing that to your point. It's a moving, like, quickly figuring it out.
It was never designed to really get.
Well, but if you think about the rental situation, right, that we thought about friendly 40Bs, a friendly 40B would be a, a rental project because all of those units would count towards our affordable units, affordable inventory. So, I mean, if we can find, you know, developers who want to come in and, and do rentals, um, they're out there, yeah. And we're, we're starting to run out of land. I mean, it's hard to believe, but there aren't very many big parcels of land available in Pembroke anymore. And as you know, through the master plan process, we identified about 400 acres of available land for residential development. And, you know, that doesn't count, septic doesn't count, you know, wetlands and all of the other things that go into, you know, developing a piece of property. So we're not looking at 400 units of single-family housing in 400 acres. We may be looking at half of that.
So, I want to address the, the chapter 40B and, and the strain that it's putting on the town of Pembroke and kind of where we are. Uh, so the town, town of Pembroke has been trying to, uh, move forward, uh, by having the Affordable Housing Committee look at those little parcels of lands that you mentioned, Andy. And, uh, they're the ones that actually, well, kind of they identified it, the, the owner approached them about simultaneously. For that, that housing that's going up across from the country store, across from your bus lot.
Plain Street.
They're at Plain Street, yeah. So that's friendly 40B that came to us, is actually the very first one in the town of Pembroke that this board heard and approved. And now it's on the way to the ZBA. And I know some of the folks have been going to the ZBA meetings and, um, um, oppose the project. But there's only so much opposition you can have. So chapter 40B was foisted upon, uh, the state. Uh, I never liked it to begin with, but we had a statewide referendum, uh, probably about five, six years ago or so, and the entire state had, had the chance to vote for it or against it, and the state voted for it. So we, so the legislative, legislature put it on there, and then fast forward a few more years, the, the voters voted for it. So whether you like the law or not, it's here to stay. So we need to play by the rules and, and play by the rules that help the town of Pembroke. And I think that's what we're doing by the Affordable Housing Committee, and they're doing yeoman's work over there. And, um, I, I like that group and they're doing it, they're, they're trying to do it the right way. And if we can get more friendly 40Bs here as opposed to someone just coming in and plopping down, uh, some obtrusive lot like River Marsh, for instance, uh, that's better for the town. So when, when the, the citizens, the voters hear that this town is advocating for 40Bs, friendly 40Bs, uh, they should understand that there's a whole background to it. We're, we're not just here trying to force apartments in Pembroke and make Pembroke Quincy, make Pembroke Waymouth, make Pembroke Gorgaster, all the stuff that you hear. We're not trying to do that. We have to do it. We have to do it, but we have to do it in a way that, um, uh, that works for our town. And I think we're doing that. I think we have the right people in place. We have this board. We have the Affordable Housing Committee. We have the planning board who are thinking about this a, a lot. And the, the ZBA doing, uh, the work that they do.
I have to tell you, we've been ahead of the curve on a lot of these issues. So not only with the MBTA communities law, but also with the ADU, uh, law that's going into effect in a couple of weeks. So we already had an ADU bylaw on the books. So we're gonna comply with that. We're supposed to comply with it. It's gonna be easy for us to comply with it. We'll have to make some changes to it, but not very many changes. So we've been ahead of the curve on a lot of these housing issues. And the bottom line is housing is really a good thing. People need it. Yeah. And it also helps with growth. I mean, the challenge that you guys have with, you know, balancing a budget, uh, any growth helps.
Our school system is $16,000, $17,000 per child.
Yeah, but.
Two child, two children per household, it doesn't work.
Yeah, but enrollments have been declining.
True.
Regularly. And, you know.
But that doesn't help out chapter 70 money either.
No, that's true.
And our, our school system is not designed for a declining enrollment.
No.
So we have to look at that as well.
That's right.
But no, I will applaud the, the planning board. You guys did an excellent job with, um, getting those apartment complexes in there and, and really, that really helps us on that 10%. But you can't, you can't, um, fault the people of a neighborhood they've lived in their whole life. And then you have a, a concentrated development going in that just doesn't fit. Like, it's just not fair to the, to the neighbors. So you have to understand, yeah, there's gonna be pushback.
Yeah.
And I, I agree with them. I, I don't believe the state has, should have a right. I, I, I agree, Dan. They, they voted on it, but they shouldn't have the right to come in here and tell us what our zoning laws are gonna be. Or circumnavigate our zoning laws that we agreed upon for the character of our town. So.
Yeah, but we agreed on a lot of those laws before the state mandated us to do it. So we have looked at housing issues. We've looked at density issues. Um, and we decided to allow multifamily housing in Pembroke through our bylaw process, through town meeting process. So we did that. So that was home rule in, in the clearest sense. So we did do that. And we do a fair amount of planning and we're very transparent about it. And all the meetings for the master plan were transparent. Anyone could go. So I know there are, you know, concerns about these things, and there should be, and people should care enough about them. But also they can participate in the process if they'd like.
But you really threaded that needle with the MBTA, and I applaud you for that.
I'd like to see so many more people here asking questions about this on the agenda.
I was hoping for some more people.
Did you have?
You're absolutely right, Paul. If you have a house there and we're a coach, you take pieces of property from eminent domain and, uh, it's like, it's like to become prime rib. It was a nice town when we moved in there like 20 years ago, right? There was two rates, the liquidated law, we, all of them basically kidnapping, right, and well, it looks like Lincoln Heights where we live. So we moved to Pembroke because it's a nice community, and now they're bringing the MBTA Community Act here and this. Community Act here, and it's, you know, we want to keep, kind of like you said, it's a nice community, we need here for the character of it. And my question to this gentleman is, we do a lot of road trips, Sunday driving, there is plenty of land in the western part of the country, I mean, you know, and especially, you know, west of 128 Worcester, where Springfield's looking for population, Ludlow, Hadley, Amherst. Why doesn't the state, and this goes back to the Pappy administration probably before, giving tax incentives to move the population there instead of bringing the jobs to Boston? And in bringing people here, they're actually worried about the carbon footprint, every, you know, business community, and more people, it's more carbon. I mean, it's just, so how can they not move the population out there?
So one thing, I mean, I will, I will say, too, like, going back to the point about how we've been ahead of the curve with this, you know, so on and so forth, definitely true, because even everything that you just mentioned there, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but like, the average town is significantly below the 10%, I believe, especially in the area.
Is anyone around us?
They're significantly below. We're like, one of the only ones that are actually close to like 10%.
Pembroke's the only town in this region that actually hit 10% at one time.
Yep.
And now we're just a little bit low, but it's, you have to hit the number, 10% or nothing. And the state's the one that calculates those numbers for you. It's not what Sabrina marks down or our assessors do. It's the state marks it down, and if there's, if they're going to average it one way or another, you know which way they're going to average it, the low side.
But yeah, a lot of these towns, they're all reactive to the situation. They're always stuck on the hamster wheel, or they've just given up entirely, and so they're falling off behind. Because Pembroke has been proactive about it, and the things that we've talked about and doing with the master plan, and so on and so forth, we're driving above the 10%. We're planning to drive above it and using friendly 40Bs, et cetera, to do that, so we can gain back control of our town, so we don't have to worry about some of this stuff as much. Where it's going to just, the developers will just take over the other towns as well. So there's a framework we're working within, and that framework, working within that framework will allow us to, it is what it is, but we will, we'll have the situation under control.
And it always sounds ambitious, but the Affordable Housing Committee's goal is 15%, so we can get off the hamster wheel.
Yeah. So they'll have another census.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a quick comment. We have developers that want to work with us. We should take advantage of that, because if they want to work with us, we can negotiate with them and have, get what we want for the 10%, they get what they want for housing in the areas where we want it, you know?
I just had a question with the 10% wasn't, why does the target keep moving?
Because, so what happens?
So as the population grows and requires more affordable housing, and then it keeps...
You mean, 10% there's other development, you can...
And then it keeps going up. Gotcha.
Should I go to my...
I'll get it.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I'm just doing this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, Katrina. I just wanted to ask mostly for the public to clarify the difference when you have a choice in terms of the housing to get to that 10%, you have more control over the planning, versus when you're not at that 10%, and then the decision is kind of made for you. So like, what the benefits are to getting to that 10%, so you have more control over the building decisions.
Well, yes. So if we get to the 10%, we can, we can say no to a project. So for instance, I know River Marsh has never been very popular. If we were at a 10%, we could have said no to that successfully. I think that we should always, though, be working with developers on getting a project that we think is in the best interests of the town, though. So it's a, it's a goal to get to the 10%, I understand that, but that doesn't mean 40Bs go away. There may be a very good 40B project that comes before us, and we should be willing to consider that. We shouldn't, it shouldn't be a knee-jerk no, no answer, you know, once we hit the 10%.
But it gives us the leverage.
It does give us the leverage to do that, yeah.
And the new development, too, and people have to remember, there's a lot of budget crunching, and, you know, we're not really getting the most help from the state with recent things. So that new development is absolutely necessary to avoid prop two-and-a-half overrides and things like that. So you have, kind of have to choose, is like, do you want to go down the road of, you know, completely constricting all development as much as possible, and then you have to accept prop two-and-a-half, regular prop two-and-a-half overrides in your future? Or you have to find a way to work within the framework that we have, get above the 10%, get that, get that new development with some guardrails around it, that it still works for the town, and that we're not faced with overrides.
Well, it shows you the importance of planning, too. So having a master plan in effect, having a housing production plan in effect are important planning tools to help us, you know, get there. And the more influence we have over, over the projects, the better off we are, because we've got a say in them. So, you know, the friendly 40B route, a lip, those types of things. We want to know what's going on, and we want to have, exert a bit of influence over it, so.
Do you mind if I throw something in? I apologize. But Andy's absolutely right, and one of the things that we do, Pembroke Housing Production Plan, the master plan, the open space plan, we spend time, resources, energy, get together, put the best brains in the talent, right? And you come up with this plan, and it gives you guideposts, and it gives you things that you're looking for, things you need to achieve. And then we get bogged down sometimes, especially if there's turnover on a board, or if someone loses focus, or COVID, or you take a look at that open space plan, and the real estate we have left in this town to build on is what these guys have to work with, or the rest of the public has to work with when they come before the planning board. And listening to them, and how they actually get to these decisions, and how they negotiate the amendments to the bylaws, everybody should watch your meeting.
Oh, thank you.
It's true. It's true.
I'd tell them to get a life, but...
You mentioned about 400 acres left.
Yeah, roughly.
And about 200 developable, right? Wetlands.
Give or take.
Roadways, frontage.
Yep.
So then we're maxed out. What's that going to mean for 40B?
There won't be any land to build it on, or...
We're stuck at 12%.
They'll repurpose.
And if we're at 8% when we're fully built out, what does that mean?
And tear down houses?
Yeah.
I mean, you look at Metro West.
Assessors are having a huge problem in Metro West, because people are buying land, buying houses and tearing down the house for the land at a value that's more than the assessors assessing the entire property for. Tear downs, the city of Newton, the city of Newton is like famous for them, the entire streets are, the entire street is torn down, and new houses are built, or a 40B project goes in.
And that's when we can take a look at our water resources and decide if we can build up.
Correct.
Can't stop them for water.
Right. Water, water's not, 40B doesn't, helps you for some of your other projects, and certainly commercial development, but not for 40B.
One of the other things, too, we're talking about the MBTA and why it was easier, made more sense for Pembroke to do it than versus some of the other towns. A, you know, it wasn't difficult for us, we're just a little, few tweaks on the zoning. The area worked well for us. We were MBTA adjacent, so the requirements were lower as well. There was also the grant funding at risk. A lot of other towns maybe don't use as much of that grant funding. Pembroke, we actually lean on...
Well, fire and grants. And not only that, the governor's making that more stringent with some of the new stuff that's come out in the last month. So we... We've got a new public safety building being built, and we're going to want some of those fire act grants.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, I just want to say, I just want to say, like, I hate the idea that the state of Massachusetts is even doing this in the first place the way that they're doing it. It is completely inappropriate and unfair and just wrong, you know? So I feel for our sister towns that are around us that are in a very different situation than Pembroke, but you can't die on every hill. You know, you have to be pragmatic at some point, and this one for Pembroke, it just didn't, really didn't make sense.
Well, fortunately for us, it wasn't a heavy...
Right.
I think if it were, if it were different, and it affected super negatively a neighborhood, we would probably be in a different position.
But you guys have prepared. It was amazing watching that happen the year, 18 months before, when you guys came forward with the changes in industrial AMV, and that you were prepared. And Affordable Housing worked with planning board to get to a place they could agree on, and then a year and a half later, MBTA rolls down, they're like peanut butter and jelly. You just have to make some changes.
Yeah, so some, some people who are detractors of this, of this town, and others, you know, folks I work with live in Milton, for instance, and I advise them that you cannot fight the state on this, this MBTA housing, because even if the town of Milton or any town fought and won in court by some technicality, the legislature will just change the law. It's like, who are you fighting against? What are you fighting against? It's silly, because they, they want this to happen, it's going to happen. If you, if you fight them on the law for a technicality, they'll just change the law to fill that gap. And that's what they've done. That's literally what they've done. So all that, all that time, energy spent, and everything I predicted happened.
Yeah, and on the financial side, which is my biggest concern, the governor's making it more difficult. More and more grants are at stake right now, today, than when we actually pass this, and stuff that will have major impact.
Well, this goes back to, back to your point, you know, the legislators, the ones that pushing this and whatnot, so folks have to think about how they're voting and who they're voting for. I am aware, I believe, that our new rep, Ken Suesi, did just submit a whole bunch of bills to try to change this bill, to try to change this law, the MBTA Chapter 3A law. So we'll see how far that goes, is a few different options that were submitted. But at the end of the day, people have to really think about, you know, is, should I just vote based on the tribe that I'm attached to? Or should I vote based on, you know, how my town is actually being affected in my pocketbook? Maybe we should start looking at that. So.
Does anybody have any other questions for Andy?
Um...
From the board, hold on. Anybody else from the board have any questions? Katrina, do you have another question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, sorry. I just wanted to, I know you said there was a group of folks that had worked on it in 2017, 2018. What, who were some of the folks that were on the, on the planning board and helped make some of those things happen?
Well, we had a, we had a full planning board at that time. We also worked closely with the Affordable Housing Committee. I represent the planning board on the Affordable Housing Committee. Jim Noon also represents the planning board on the Affordable Housing Committee. We did get a grant from the Old Colony Planning Council through Becky Coletta to do the, the housing production plan. So, and these are things that we do on an ongoing basis. If we can find a way to, to fund, we got to update the housing production plan, by the way, because it's only good for a couple of years. And that also gives you the opportunity to apply for grants as well, having an active housing production plan and master plan, which we have got both of. So there's a lot of folks on the planning board and in conjunction with the Affordable Housing Committee. Judy Parks has done a great job of chairing that committee. We work pretty well together. So, yeah.
I just thought you'd be good to recognize. It sounds like there's love embedded into it.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just had, I got to say, I thank you guys who we represented, I think you look out for the people of Pembroke.
You know, which is something that I don't see, like, when we lived in Quincy. There's houses you were talking about, Newton, you say? Have they been taken by eminent domain as well?
No, the city actually didn't. They have strong developers there, they're just...
They just have a lot of money.
Lot of cash, lot, lot of cash for the developers there.
You were saying, it's basically, unless the legislature doesn't care, they don't care what we think. They just really...
Well, I wouldn't characterize it like that.
I mean, this is Suesi, like you said, for...
I would say that it's not that the legislature doesn't care what we think, it's just, you have to understand that Massachusetts has, you know, Boston, Cambridge, Springfield, Lowell, and those, those places have a different philosophy of life than the suburbs like Pembroke do. And there's more, there's more of them. So they, they care, but they care, they kid, their priorities are different than a suburban community, or maybe even a rural community. And they have more legislators in those towns.
So it's population, too. It's... They just override it because there's more of them.
There's more of them, yeah.
And by the way, 40B is not solving housing. It's such a small percentage. It really is.
Thank you for coming, Andy. I appreciate it. We appreciate it. All right, moving on.
I want to thank you guys all together.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Do you have another data?
No. I was just curious about if we can move the population up further west, though, because it's like Springfield's got a ton of empty...
He's a Pembroke guy. He works with us.
Good to have you.
Lucky to have him.
Thank you very much. Before we do the town manager's report, do we have any announcements?
Yes, I would like to make an announcement. I am formally announcing my intent to run for reelection for the select board. So I look forward, thank you. I just posted about an hour, hour and a half, two hours ago on my select board page, so a few, a few things. So I would appreciate people's vote for consideration, and, you know, a lot's going to happen between now and May 17th, and we'll see how it goes. We'll see if it'll be the most boring election or the most exciting election.
I like boring. I like boring. Let's go with boring. Perfect, good luck. I just have one this Saturday, I don't know, you all got the memo, Kathy Benve's retirement party is going to be, yeah, Saturday, January 25th through 7 to 9 at the, is it at the library? Thank you, okay. I just want to make sure people saw that, because it's coming up quick. Any other announcements?
Oh, no. I guess I'll go under the liaison.
Okay. Town manager's report, Bill?
Okay. I just have one thing I want to go over tonight, and that is the instances of deceased birds. Just before 11:00 AM on Sunday morning, the town was notified that by a resonant furnace bomb, that there were several deceased geese and others that were pretty ill on the pond. The animal control officer went and took a look and assessed the situation. She reported to the town manager's office that there were approximately 24 dead wildfowl. They included Canada geese and swans and juvenile eagles that were all deceased. You've probably seen the reports, what happened in Plymouth with all of that. So we contacted feds in the state, USDA, Division of Animal and Plant Health, Inspection Service was contacted, they dispatched, I'm going to use train, because there was some question as to whether we wanted to go remove them, and we didn't, because we aren't trained on dealing with...
And you're still insured for workers' compensation.
Yeah, exactly. We don't want to have to deal with that. So they were trained, they're outfitted with, you know, protective equipment, they've retrieved them, they've taken tests, samples for testing from the expired birds. I just want to note, because everybody keeps asking me, when are we going to get the results? When are we going to get the results? It's going to be a while. There's only one lab in the entire United States that can test for this. I have no idea why, but, so I honestly don't know. I just know there's one lab, and it's going to, it's going to take a bit...
Is it run by Tony Fauci?
No. As far as I know, no. It's a private lab. So, so at this point, we don't have any confirmation on what caused the death. We do suspect that it, that it's the pathogenic avian influenza, which otherwise known as bird flu. You are probably aware, community to ourself had 60 dead waterfowl, large fowl, water and wildfowl. and wildfowl. Their results of that have been also sent to the lab, and they, they don't have it back 100 percent, but they, we're being told to treat it as bird flu. So I just wanna, to talk about it, if, if you see birds out there, you know, contact the animal control officer, or go and take a look at the state's website, it gives you instructions on how to report them. We wanna make sure that we get them reported and get them removed. If you have pets, especially cats, especially cats, cats are highly susceptible to the bird flu. If a cat gets near it, your cat's gonna die, unfortunately. So do not let your cats outdoors, if you can, absolutely avoid it. Other, other, other animals, dogs and all other animals are susceptible to it, especially birds. You know, those that are in the feline genus, such things such as fox, and fisher cats are also very highly susceptible to it. The survival rate is not good. So if you can avoid contact, do not touch dead birds, or even the eel birds, you can tell they start to wander like they're drunk.
Don't touch birds.
Don't, just don't touch them. And don't let your pets touch them. Don't let your kids, don't let your, don't let your husband or your wife, or, you know, don't let anybody touch them.
Nobody can hurt them.
So, so, just, just stay safe. Like I said, avoid handling it. If you see five or more, check our website, there's, there's a number, just, you can report it. It's the 293-6363 for us. And again, pets and cats, highly susceptible, be safe. So, hopefully, it is. Yeah, for the animal control.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll, you know, be able to get through this. It's gonna go probably several months, and I suspect, based on the history and some of the reading I did over the last couple of days, that it's gonna get much worse before it gets better. And the good news is that, generally speaking, like all flus, in the springtime, it just goes away. So, just be safe. And if you have questions, check out the CDC, the Commonwealth has some good stuff, and we have some stuff also in our postings, so, thank you. That's everything for, we'll keep it short and sweet.
Okay. Does anyone have any liaison updates?
The bylaw committee has a few articles for town meeting. We're going to meet next Tuesday and answer any questions that the public might have. And you can see those articles on Facebook, starting this Friday, Sabrina? Are we gonna put that on Facebook?
I would move them. Just pressure sending them along. As soon as I receive them, I certainly will.
Okay.
The agenda's already posted, so you've got that description in there.
I thought that was already sent today, no? All right, we'll get them.
I'm sure they will.
We'll get them all up.
Thank you. And as soon as they come and want them posted.
Great, yeah. We'll get them, I'll get them to you tomorrow.
I was thinking, so we can even do a thing for the event on the 28th, in this room, at 5:00.
Yeah, we're gonna do it here.
Yep.
But I wanna get them onto Facebook, so people can read them, and they can kind of, they have questions.
Sure.
And as soon as we have them, I'm gonna circulate to the select board.
So the meeting is Tuesday, the 28th, at 5:00, here?
Right.
Okay. How many articles you, how many bylaws you?
I think we're six, seven.
Anybody else that you got updates? Do we have any old business?
Yeah, question. So, we're looking at getting the new sign. Any ETA on the new sign for?
Don't look at the ETA, if you have all your engineering schematics, I can show you at your next meeting if you wanna see it.
That would be awesome. Question, so, I don't know, I'm not exactly familiar with the, if there's any sentimental value around the old sign. My understanding is that some folks, there is a lot of sentimental value there. Does it make sense for us to, instead of, you know, completely removing and trashing it, maybe donating it to the Pembroke Historical Society?
Sure. I'm happy to do that.
Okay, and then let them decide what they wanna do with it. Maybe they, they know, they are more familiar with the value or not, it might make sense, and they can restore it or something. Okay. Another question, old business, public safety building, any update, status update on where we're at?
So it's kind of going through the design process still. We are, we posted today to start to do review, prequal, prequalification. So, general contractors and subcontractors will have to submit for prequalification, that takes several weeks. And then as the documents get completed, and we have the full CD or construction document set of the architectural plans, we'll be out to bid.
I think we used an entire page of the Patriot Ledger last Friday. But, yeah.
Oh, nice. One more comment. We're looking at allowing liquor licenses at the community center for weddings. So, at another time, I'd like to discuss raising those fees.
Okay.
It's gonna be a moneymaker for someone, and we might as well participate.
For all the weddings we're having at the community center?
The community center has been phenomenal.
I know.
I'm relieved. I mean-
And at least one wedding, right?
I think there was a wedding, I'll double check. I don't think so.
I'll double check, I'll ask for it.
The lights are beautiful.
We've had, we've had a ton of activity there, though, just, and, and activity where we're collecting cash, which is just awesome, because it's paying for itself.
It's nice just to drive by and see the kids outside.
Yeah, I mean, it's unbelievable. You go over there, the gym is full, you go in the morning, and it's the old fat guys like me, shooting ball. It's, it's awesome, it's absolutely awesome. Former selectmen, I ran into a former selectman over there a few weeks ago, so-
So there's a lot of out-of-towners who are coming to the community center and using it.
Yeah, and they're paying a full fee to use the facility, it's awesome.
Nice.
You know, and-
Almost like all the work and effort that was put into it is worth it.
We could be excited about it.
Yeah, no, that's a good thing. It's awesome.
It's nice to hear and see.
We'll get back to you with some of that information, and what we can do with those one day.
Yeah, another meeting.
Absolutely.
Anything else for old business? Do we have any community comment from the board? Do we have any community comment from our community? Katrina, come on up.
I just have, like, events that are coming up.
Perfect.
I'm Katrina. So, speaking of legislature, legislators, I know Dylan Fernandez is having a listening session on Monday, the 27th, at 5:00 PM at the community center.